So the school board is asking to do a quick summary through our efforts today. Probably catalog information, but it has to be quick here. My understanding is, I've seen it on your website, all the information is already up there. You get a peruse, you know, some bedtime rating. It's pretty involved. What we did is a lot of listening over the last two months. It was a tremendous collaborative effort between your educational team and the catalog group committee and us to make sure we really understood what your educational needs and vision were going forward. So we did a lot of cataloging as to what your facilities are and how you're using them and how they work and how they don't. So with that information, we worked together with the educators to figure out what the actual needs were, what existing needs in the spaces are and how to be fulfilled and what new needs really need to be fulfilled to bring your educational program forward to best serve your students. So what we have is two overarching categories, which is existing needs and new needs, and those are the essentials as identified by our educational team. And then there are recommendations, which are things that would be advantageous to have and are not absolutely essential, but not high in the sky wish stuff either. And then there's sort of a wants category, the wish list category, things that you know in a perfect world, this would be a bit like a hack. So in this multi-page report with spreadsheets and so forth, the bottom line is that the existing elementary school is a little over 29,000 square feet. It was built as a high school many years ago. It's had small additions to it, the 1953, 1960 addition and the 1984 addition. The school has done a tremendous job, sorry, the community for its lifespan and a lot of the systems of the building have kind of been of their useful light. The school system has done a tremendous job in adapting the school as best they can for the educational needs. But in the end, you're kind of, you're working with a configuration that was never built to be used the way it's used now. So unfortunately, what you're experiencing in your elementary school is a symptom that we see in a lot of our New Hampshire schools, which is in an older building that's set up for general class instruction, you know, desks and rows and so forth. We're really sort of cobbling together services as best we can to those older buildings to educate students with special education and special instruction needs that are more 21st century oriented. We'll try to also teach all STEM and STEAM and project-based learning and sciences and all these things that really were not a emphasis in 1928 when the simple origin was built. So what we looked at, your whole curriculum, well, we really looked at how could we respond to some of these needs of bringing all the students back into one building instead of having to split up into three. So this educational program looks at your curriculum as one program. If this were a new building, this would be the ideal thing to do. That was tempered a little bit from the DOE requirements, the educational team, so we tended to look at all the numbers and try to figure out what would be the ideal class size based off of your guidelines as a school district and how that would actually be implemented so that it's practical for optimal square footage without embellishing that. So what the school system established was that two classrooms per grade seemed to make more sense at the elementary school for the class sizes that you had. There's a core student population being served of about 240, 246 within a room of 180 at this particular time. There were a lot of existing needs that were services that you're providing right now that are, really don't have home in the existing schools. So we've identified those needs and given them a square footage to satisfy them. And just one example would be, you know, you have a couple of occupational therapy services that are being provided in the same space that you're providing other services in. Math intervention, reading intervention are being provided in the same room that the book storage is happening and individual instruction is sometimes homeless as it were with the building, all these different functions that you're providing now versus now really need in this space. And then there are some new need items, which include things like an additional preschool classroom. Here's STEM, which is basically a maker space and that's a 240 square foot space right now in the library. So I guess that's an existing need, but it's not being served very well on your inaccessible stage. So the idea would be to give it a proper sized room to do that instruction. Your computer lab is right now in the library and sharing it with the rest of the school. So that really needs its own space. Again, it's an existing need that's being adapted. The school worked very hard to consider what the real need was instead of just adding space and adding space. We sort of pulled back and said, what really could be accommodated through alternate methods rather than every length its own space individually, what can be shared? So the upshot of it is what you're looking at here is a little table that shows your existing, your existing square footage here and then your needs. So if you have a new building, which is the top row, it's an addition of square footage to accommodate the needs identified of about 16,700 square feet if we were to do this in a whole new building, which is about a 57% growth of the building's size. We have to take a slightly more conservative approach when we look at renovating. So if we were to use the existing building and adapt it and then expand on it to satisfy the need identified, it would have to be a larger building. And the reason why we put a multiplier on that is because the existing building, when you do a renovation, there are certain inefficiencies that go along with having an existing structure. So instead of, instead of a building that is 45,000, almost 46,000 square feet, if we were going to be doing a renovation in addition, it would be closer to 53,000 square feet.
Did anybody get that chant?
Well, there's a message there somewhere. So I touched upon some of these amenities that we go through just along the top here, but the idea being that you've got the two classrooms per grade for preschool through fifth grade. The school system has asked for a bubble graded classroom, which is a slightly larger classroom for one of the grades, so that as you experience some anomalies in your enrollment, you have some flexibility. So you can have a couple of classrooms in a larger than the normal ones. We put those on the first floor so they could be used for first or second grade or for any grade instead of on a higher level. That's a really important thing from a safety perspective. We talked about the STEM maker space, bringing the physical education and the music and preschool and art back into the building, so it's all in the building. Taking a lot of the storage that's in the corridors and stairwells and the instructional spaces and pulling them out of those spaces so that they can be used properly and putting them in a designated storage space so you can really work more efficiently. And getting the proper support spaces for the administration so that you can do testing, individual instruction, have the proper offices and conference areas to work efficiently as well as doing instruction simultaneously, which is kind of doing some deep thought here right now. And let's see, finally, one of the, one of the big items was the gym. Right now, you've got the gym down the hill with all the safety concerns that go wrong with that and the disruptions of the school day as you have students traveling back and forth. One of the goals is here is to create a multipurpose room, which we double as a gym or a function space. That's not a DOE, Department of Education, standard size of 7,000 square feet. What the school system has asked for is a 5,000 square foot space as probably would be attached to the building so that they could be traveling, the students could be between classes and gym classes would not have to go outside and not be created by traffic, steep slopes and all that kind of thing. That's really kind of the big overview of the elementary school. Is there any quick questions in the elementary?
Yeah. Remitted or wait for the public?
Yeah, we, I think we're in good shape. There's a very effective, very effective way.
So with regards to the high school, you know, it's a wonderful high school and it's much more modern than the elementary schools. So what we found is the educational efficiencies at the school were much less dramatic. What we're really talking about after a great field of analysis and discussion with Sean and Russ is that you really have a couple of special education needs that aren't being fulfilled properly here. You've got a couple of classrooms that are sort of the wrong size, they need to be tweaked. And then there was a discussion or want for a performance type space. That's, that's the big overview. So this is a much less ambitious educational building space plan. Just to go through really quick, what we're talking about is the science rooms, biology and phys ed. You've got, sorry if I said.
Physical science.
Physical science, but thank you. So your physics room or your physical science room is huge. It's very big and it's oversized and the biology room right next to it is too small. So this is very simple, really. We just need to do an adaption to the configuration. You have a couple of functions here that where you have teachers on carts or non-existent instructional spaces, specifically you have an assistant study, assistant study room. Your occupational and physical therapy is really on a cart with no equipment, which is just really not appropriate for special services. So that would have a new room ideally. Your high school life skills right now is, it's being coupled with your middle school life skills and it really needs its own space by state regulations standards. So there's a modest room in addition to the square footage in the building for that. And then some incidental areas that really just support the staff, plus the performance auditorium and that's its support services. So what we see is a very small increase in square footage between the existing area and the needs. It's a little over 1,000 square feet. And then in the wants, you see quite a significant chunk of square footage. It's about a 12,000 square foot request for the wish list bed, which is the performance space and for about, I guess, 400 people, audience and then sort of the storage and re room and the AV room, things that all support a space like that. We looked very carefully at the multipliers for this. It's a little bit different if you really dig into the numbers of the insights. We didn't put in the renovation multiplier for the middle high school because it's such a modern building, you're really not going to have the sort of inefficiencies renovating this building that you would have renovating the 1928 elementary school. So if you're really enthusiastic about digging through the numbers, that's what you'll find as an explanation of that issue.
So for board members that weren't so close to this, while several months, questions or comments?
Just with the elementary school, the multipurpose room for community use, that's part of the use, it's going to be a gym. That'll be a gym within.
Its primary use is a gym. So it's an elementary type gym too. It's not a full-size gym. So you're talking about, you know, a couple of basketball hoops and play court for volleyball or whatever.
The areas which we're talking about, for our enrollment, basically stay the same without looking at any major increases or decreases. We're talking about new size and everything.
So I, we take our lead from your, from your educational team on enrollment and core numbers, so we'll let Russ speak to that. Essentially what we do is we ask for the educational team, for the S and U, to give us your numbers that you want us to design for the 21st century going forward and in terms of trends, do you want?
Sure. So we really looked at our enrollments, we looked at projections, we looked at this break of the past history of the last couple of years. And one of the, and we looked at our policy. And our policy says that in page one through five, that our class size can be the 22, 23. And then at that point in time, teachers could ask for, go to the board, the policy and ask for an additional teacher. We looked at that number, based upon that number, we said, all right, let's do 22 per class or 44 per grade. And right now, our current grades run anywhere from 22 in grade to 42 in grade. So we said, all right, well, let's look at if you were 22 in a class, so that as a 44 per, excuse me, 22 in a class, 44 per grade, one through five, that would accommodate, I think that was 200, there's over 200 students right now. Our population's with 180, that would probably be 207 kids in those classrooms. And so we said, all right, 207, that's not bad. We're 180 now, project that forward. He said, but then once that we're the core part of the building, to build the core part of the building, you're building the core part of the building then for 286 students. And we're saying, wait a minute, we don't think we're going to hit 286. So we're back to look at the numbers and say, all right, let's be realistic. What are we putting in our classrooms? Our classroom size, if you make an average about 18, and we're pretty comfortable education with that, 18 is a good number and not to exceed probably 22. And so we want the 18 number instead, and that 18 number brought that our core spaces down to 246. We think that's a projection number moving forward. So the answer, the short answer was yes.
The core versus enrollment become important numbers because you're building the infrastructure of the building to the core. So when we look at the number of costumes you need for a nurse's office or the size of your cafeteria, based on how many electric you want to have, that's, that's where these numbers really start to come into play. So we really have to address the long-term max usage of building versus what your current enrollment is now. And that's how we, that's what we're covering. Did that answer you?
Yes. I just was talking to a parent in the school that said, when the design of the building for the school was planned, they constructed a school that the levels were relaxed, they could build up on the school. And they made preparations for 20 years from now on, designing the school, if there was a population increase in the area, to work to such a cost of taxpayers, claimers down the road as in if you use the new facility and just a lot, just thought that was interesting up here at the end of about 20 years, finding out the programs, you know, the population was.
Building up is, just to speak to that a little bit, I've heard it a lot in my 30-something career about building up in the future. I found it to be successful once in the last 30 years. I wanted it at a hospital. But generally what we find is that organizations and communities that plan for a, say, a two-story building ultimately, but they build a one-story building now, by the time the addition is required, the codes have advanced to the point where the existing one-story building is insufficient to support the next story. So you kind of end up spending more to build the first story and then you can't just put the addition on anyway, than putting a separate addition on anyway. So that's just my anecdotal response. I mean, it can't work. It's a little bit difficult also to do a second story addition on an occupied building. So it's just, it's not impossible. It's been done. I've done it myself. I would just caution that experience.
Specific to enrollment numbers, could you touch on or reinforce beyond the education plan of working across the principals and everybody, the, how NESDEC projections are used in this kind of a project and other projects? Can you, new people in the audience, can you just touch on that a little bit?
Sure. So, you know, the best way to speak to it is really to, about the, what we talked to the state about their attitude toward the NESDEC and what its validity is. The state recognizes that the NESDEC is not fully accurate, but they don't really see it as the entire story.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
I'm sorry. Actually, we have a microphone.
Going forward, we're going to have mics.
We're going to have mics next time. So what I was saying was that the New Hampshire Department of Education looks at the NESDEC numbers as interesting information, but not the whole story. They really look to the town and the school system to exhibit a thought process that really takes that analysis to the next level and applies it to the unique character of their community. So when ultimately should this bond pass, you want to go to the Department of Education for approval, they're going to be looking for that rationale, that way that the NESDEC was used, to interpolate on your ultimate need because every community is different and the NESDEC does not always apply. In this case, what we're seeing is, generally speaking from the NESDEC, is that it's pretty level over the next few years that it actually does project. Because it doesn't project way down the line. It's, you know, you might get 10 years out of NESDEC and that's it. It's not going to give you your full 40 years. So you sort of need your principal all right. But what we saw from your NESDEC numbers is that your class size, because we looked at all classes, not just one class that goes down from the upper, because obviously we'll look at the highest number for each grade through the projected years. The numbers are level or they may be slightly off. It's a very slight increase. But it's only one piece of the puzzle. The NESDEC doesn't tell us. So if you really look to the community, tell us how they interpret those numbers, what they perceive impacts the outside impact being. So we didn't see more people moving into town, more development than the NESDEC necessarily responded to. Because the NESDEC, generally speaking, looks at people who are actually forming families in town or born in town by census. It doesn't necessarily factor in migration from other municipalities or nearby cities that might have work, so people moving to town and commuting out. So that's how. I'm not sure if that's a secure question.
No, I think it shed some light and is on the private side of John a little bit, but just the relevance of it's a key part of the equation.
It's really important that just, you know, I can't say it, this is not the story.
Right. Other questions, comments, anything you want to add?
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Ray.
Good morning. Thank you. We'll do that again when Mr. Reed presents the slide. All right, we can have discussion. Let's go, I'm looking for a motion to approve the proposed SES, SMHS educational program summary. Please.
I'll make a move, a motion to approve the proposed SES and SMHS educational program summary.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Making care. Okay. Any questions, clarifications? I know we just discussed it at length, but other thoughts, questions? This is the time. You good? Okay. All in favor of approving the proposed SES and SMHS educational program summary? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Want to, why don't you give a summary and then we can go through the process? So we're going to move on next to the construction manager estimating services that we just discussed at length in the CIP meeting before this one. Going to lend some insight and an add color?
Sure. So one of the, one of the pieces that has been recommended to us by our project manager and our architectural firm is that we look at a construction management estimating service. And what they will do, will take a look at some of the proposals that Banwell will offer us and be able to make some recommendations and eventually narrow down a much more accurate price to build or construct that building or renovation, whatever it may be. And that's based upon, they just have a better insight because they're dealing with, whether it's, whether it's the wood cost, the metal cost, the concrete cost, they have a better insight of having dealt, dealing with that day-to-day than say, an architect would who just is putting together a plan or you or I would not knowing much about that. And so the idea of bringing somebody on board now to get a much, a much accurate cost allows us to put a right number on a warrant article potentially in March. And so if we put the right warrant article on, excuse me, the right number on the warrant article, and Banwell knows what that number is, we all now are on the same page saying, yes, we can build this, whatever, act for this money and not get in a position where, well, we said we were going to build it for 10, but really we needed 12. And so Gordon, Gordon has a great example about, well, the front of the building looks really nice because we started there, but when you go around the back of the building, it's not so nice because we ran out of money. And so we started a cheap out of one of the things. So that's my interpretation based upon these two gentlemen's explanation of what we would like to do is hire a contract management estimating service. We have an RFQ that would, we'd like to get out by Friday. We would then take requests for proposals. We would review that, bring that to the CIP, and hopefully by September 4th, bring something back here for approval.
Great. Gordon Bristol, do you have anything you want to add to the summary?
I think that summed it up fine and covered a lot earlier.
Yeah, so just two different meetings, two different attendees, as long as you feel good with that, that seemed like a good summary. So the key thing for folks that aren't familiar with the process is that we're looking for, the board needs to approve a request for quote. So this gets us out on Friday so that they can hold on. Then we have to do vetting and interview and then bring it back. It comes before the board to, to approve spending any money. So this is not approving, there's no money involved with stage one. This is what happens with consultants or other partners, just to make sure everybody understands what, what we're talking about tonight. Is that working for you?
Yes, that works for me and it, I just want to, it's so, it's very important that, so that we get on this and we get somebody on board quickly because we want to have pricing by the October 30th forum. And the only way we're going to get accurate pricing is if we get this underway and we're all brilliant on it. So it's, whoever the CM that we choose has got a lot of work to do and a lot of catch-up with Banwell and Gordon.
Yeah, and in the CIP meeting, I think most of you were there, but just the examples were back and forth, multiple examples of not taking this step and making this potential investment. That can have very negative effects for the entire project and potential future. So this is a very responsible prudent step to make as successful projects.
Get accurate pricing.
Accurate pricing.
Yeah.
And again, in reference to the, the public forum on the 12th, there's going to be several concepts, no pricing, community interaction, pros and cons, feedback. On the 30th, we would like to be able to have ideally maybe two that have specific pricing and continue the conversation down to one and go from there. So may I have a motion to approve the proposed instruction manager estimating services? Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed instruction manager estimating services.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Andy. Second for discussion and. Seconded for discussion, and anything else?
Just, when I went through this process last year, was that the architect that was ultimately providing the cost estimates?
Yes, it was.
So the idea with this is that we're gonna get both more accurate and realistic, realistic. At the end of the day.
Yes.
The voters may be able to put more confidence in.
Well, the, the numbers that they are going, are going to give us for estimating, correct me if I'm wrong, Gordon, but those are the numbers that will be on the bond vote. There's no more money in the well, you know, so. So that's how accurate those numbers will be.
It's a very, they, they can go and build from that, it's basically, you, we're, we're not asking you to commit to what firm will build it, but the fact that they're all competing against each other for these estimating services, they're gonna give us figure that they may have to then turn around next, if it passes next March. And in April, bid it out and say, we're the construction manager and oh, by the way, we can build it for that figure we gave you. And if they can't, others will build for that figure. So it helps lock you in, so you weren't suddenly having a surprise come next July or August and say, gee, the drawings are all done and now this building that we thought was going to be sixteen million is now twenty-two. And you guys go, wait a minute, what happened? So it's a very prudent, also, we didn't talk about the dollar, I'm, I'm guessing this is going to come in, in somewhere in the fifteen thousand dollar range, give or take. It, it's a lost leader for these companies to get in the door and get going with us with the hopes that they then have something else to do, but we're not in any way committing, that's why we wrote it up this way. So we're not, you're not looking that when we come back to you in September with the recommendation, I would be surprised if it wasn't in that range. So we're not talking forty, fifty, sixty thousand, we're talking fifteen, that neighborhood.
So, so I totally, I completely understand the importance of doing this, right? Because we're trying to de-risk this for ourselves. So my question is, if we bring on board a construction manager and they say this is gonna cost us twenty million dollars, but we're not committed to going with that construction manager, how do we know that another construction manager, if we decided to choose somebody else, could guarantee us that price? Is that gonna be a requirement that we would have to establish to say, here's our price that we've gone to warrant with, this is what it has to come in with? And if you can't do that, then don't bid on it? Is that, is that kind of the stage that we would be setting?
Well, he estimated the construction manager estimate, they're motivated to be accurate because they may ultimately be the ones that are selling. So they're not motivated at all to give you a low level number that somebody else is then gonna have to deal with. At the same time, they're not motivated to overinflate it either, because.
Somebody else can come lower.
They want to move forward, right? So it, it's a, it's a, it's a good balance of relationship to keep them on target. They have to make it so it's realistic.
But is it incumbent on us, when we do go to actually hire a construction manager, to put that in our contractual terms, to say, here's the dollar value that we have got approved and you have to commit to working within this, because we've established pricing and this is what we've got, end of story?
What is, so we'll, we'll fast forward to, and people can hear, we'll fast forward, say we have, you have a successful vote and it's X dollars. What will happen is that the architect will do up their drawing and it'll go out to bid. Everyone knows what your pool of money is, so they're gonna come in and try to be as close to that as they can. Now, if five construction firms come in and bid it and it's X dollars plus two million, then we made some mistakes. But they all should come in at a cluster right around that, and they, they all understand how the figures work. So they, they will come in at that figure. And we won't then have to sign on to them if they don't. So if for some crazy reason something changes, and you could have an economic change, you could have a catastrophic, you know, God forbid another nine eleven, and somehow prices now go up twenty percent in the world, that can happen. We're not then committed to even go forward. You, you've been allotted the money at your town meeting or at your special vote, but until you get the actual bids with competitive process, you can say, no, don't sign the contract. Things change in the world.
But the general understanding is that the approved bond vote number is the number. That is the number we're gonna build that school to. These guys know that. This, this is the industry standard. That's the school we will deliver. Generally, what we do is if we feel that the number is tight and it's, you know, there's concern, we put alternates on the design documents so that there are scopes or elements of the job that may not be as essential or as others to you, that can be separated to lower or raise the number, depending on how it's planned on.
So, and we like to give you an example of that, so they may design an eight thousand square foot of this gym that we talked about, multi-purpose room. You might also have an alternate design and it's three thousand square feet less in size. So that if you start pumping up against the figure that your town meeting has approved, you could say, well, let's, that's a place where we could make a conscious decision and build that building slightly smaller and it doesn't affect any of our educational things that we talked about a few minutes ago, as far as we still have the right number of academic rooms.
On the flip side, if we've done design where, you know, the numbers are coming low and this school's going back into wealth, it would be cheaper for us in the long run operationally if we put surrounding, we still have all the walls, it's still over me that cost. So then we add, so if you go both ways, there's flexibility there.
Any example would be your parking, another one is the parking lots, that the parking lot's in great shape, but you know, it needs to be repaid in five years from now. If there's extra money, when the bids come in, that might be an alternate that's in there that says, okay, let's spend three hundred thousand dollars and do the driveway now on bond dollars instead of five years from now out of operating dollars. So there is relief balance. So the nice thing is this, this contract gives you a real figure that's gonna come in that people know they can build it to. And you've got bidders competing against each other in this process, so they, they want, they, they want to get it so that they can then prove their figure.
The other advantage, which was touched upon a little bit, but it's probably important to emphasize, is by having a construction management estimator is that they're involved with the real-time figures, what's happening right now in the industry for costs. And they have a sense of, of what direction things are headed in, so they can give us very good advice on alternative materials and products to use, which I may not be tuned into as a designer or architect doing drawings, but their experience in some of the job, not participating right now. So there's an added, there's a value add here that, that goes just beyond somebody crunching the numbers for us.
This is a, to, to make a quick reference to last year's bond vote. This step in process for this project brings a remarkably different level of confidence and detail for the entire community to decide on when they go to the voter booth. I was missing at the last, with a prior partner on the last bond vote. This is a, for anyone who was very close or involved during the prior ones fifteen years ago, this particular step is significant in building confidence and clarity and transparency for the community. It is a big positive step to take this path, which consultants and Andy with his perspective from building have all been very encouraging to do, so. This goes, we've had the motion and a second. I'd like to move us forward, we're good with discussion. Great questions, as always, Carrie, thank you for the detailed answers, I think it informed everybody. Can I get, all in favor of approving the instruction manager estimating services? Please say aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous. I'm gonna get to some education here. We need to approve the proposed SES extracurricular positions. Can I get a motion? We have for Jackie Keegan for chess club and Heidi Doyle for ball drama. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Jackie Keegan for the chess club and Heidi Doyle for the ball drama for the SES extracurricular positions.
Thank you, Scott, and a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ed. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the proposed SES extracurricular positions? Please say aye.
Aye.
Ananamous, appreciate it. And approve, we're gonna look to approve proposed teacher resignation and following that, a retirement. So, as is our respect or way of saying thank you, I'll read the letter from David C. Bailey and then we get a motion and a second to accept it for the formality. August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, dear Mr. Holden. Over the past thirteen years, I've enjoyed working with the students' families and faculty of Sunapee. I have learned and grown as an educator, but it is time for me to grow further. I have accepted an assistant principal position at Stevens High School, which means I will not be returning to Sunapee for the nineteen twenty school year. Please accept this letter as my resignation and my employment with Sunapee School District effective August thirtieth, or if mutually agreeable, sooner. I would like to thank you for the experiences and the opportunities I had during my time at Sunapee and I am sure they will serve me well in my new opportunity at Stevens. I wish you and the district the best in your future endeavors. Sincerely, David C. Bailey. So that's, it's, I don't know, personal comment is it's neat to see a resignation because somebody's pursuing a higher level of role in public education. Any comment you want to make?
No, just, again, it's great, Dave gets an opportunity to move on and further his career and continue to touch the lives of children.
Yeah, I wish him the best, absolutely. All right, can I get a motion to approve the proposed teacher resignation, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed resignation of Mr. Bailey. Do you want to cover Andrea's?
Um, I'll read hers. We'll just do it again, out of respect.
Sure.
Thank you, though. Second on that?
One second.
Ed on the second? Any other comment? Other than thank you and good luck? All in favor of accepting the proposed resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous, appreciate it. Moving on to the second one. From Andrea Redikand, June fifth. Dear Sean, this is from one hand, I am ready to notify you of my intent to resign my position as teacher of French at SMHS effective this week. I'll be taking the next two years off from teaching full-time to pursue an MFA in writing. I sincerely appreciate the opportunities you have given me to share my talents and interests with the young minds of Sunapee over the past twelve years. Thank you for your trust and support. Please let me know if I can be of assistance to you in your search for and training of my replacement. I am happy to help ease the transition with gratitude, Andrea Redikand. So, again, students and staff need to come and go, but both for very positive reasons. We wish her the best for their MFA in the next two years. So can I get a motion to approve the proposed teacher retirement? I mean resignation, sorry, I need a snack.
So I'll make a motion to approve the proposed SMHS resignation of Andrea Redikand.
Super.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded quickly by Scott, thank you very much. And further discussion or comment? All in favor of accepting the proposed teacher retirement, please say aye.
Aye.
Ananamous, appreciate it. Moving on to information items, we have. I need a, I need a. Hang on a second. Yes, I do. Thank you for your patience, audience. Pull it together. For the retirement, dated ten, eight, eighteen. Dear Superintendent Holden, this letter states my intention to retire from my teaching position at the Sunapee School District at the conclusion of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year. This notice is being given in accordance with paragraph fifteen point seven, quote, loyalty, longevity, retirement plan, unquote, of the Sunapee teachers, two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen, master contract from Don Emery. So, motion to approve the proposed retirement of Don Emery at the end of the school year.
Make a motion to approve proposed retirement of Don Emery.
Super. Seconded by Carrie. Any comment further? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is accepted. Take two, scene two, we are now on information items. And you are up, sir.
So the middle high school last year went through their accreditation process with New England Association of Schools and Colleges. In your package, is there a level, level, letter of, I need a snack, letter of approval? And, and folks may say, hey, that's great, but I, I want to really give some credit to the folks who worked on the steering committee and the entire faculty here and the administration. I was part of that, that process and I got to go in and I met with the team that was sent up through NEAS. And, and having been a building level principal and gone through this process in three of the school districts, and knowing the, the amount of work and time and energy that has to go into this, it's, it's overwhelming and it can overwhelm you if you don't have your stuff together. Well, we have our stuff together and we have our stuff together well. And that's really reflected here, because I haven't, I don't think in, in my thirty years of being an educator, I've heard so many high praises from the accreditation process of all the things that we are doing and doing so well here. And so this is a big deal and making a, a big deal because really the administration, the faculty, our student body, our parents, our community should be really proud of this letter and the fact that we continue to be held in such high regard. Because this is, again, this is looking at all the New England states, it's not just looking at New Hampshire. And these people travel from state to state and they, they really look at the standards that are laid out and decided upon by, by the NEAS council. And we need to meet those standards and we've just done a tremendous job, so thank you guys very much and everyone involved.
Yeah, so you don't have the full letter out. It's a, it's a long list of things that they call out. This isn't a form letter, so I don't know if you want to pick a couple to read or am I, I'm happy to do it?
Well, I think maybe Sean or me, if you guys want to talk about some of the things that you guys experienced as going through the process.
I think, I think one piece that was particularly gratifying, that's been a long-term project, is our curriculum and our curriculum review cycle, because that, that's K three twelve. And one place where the, the committee particularly highlighted is they said, you know, there's, like in theory, how it could work in an ideal world and you're really doing it. So they said that when you communicate teachers K three twelve and like, what do we have for science curriculum? What are the content and skills our students need in science through the span of their education in your school? And have that articulated and have people revisiting that and have it not go stagnant and sit on the shelf. Right? We have a four-year curriculum review cycle in every aspect of our curriculum that we're reviewing with teachers K three twelve. And they just were, they found that really remarkable. And that's everybody. So that's a real, that's, that's such great teamwork. And that's the long haul. So we're in our third or fourth iteration of a four-year curriculum cycle. So that's not something, you know, we just made it, we did it once and then on to other things. It's a long time to be really committed to, to quality planning and programming that everyone's part of. So that, I think, was a particular long-term thing we've been working on. That felt really good for the whole district.
And what I'm really happy is, is the, actually the, the recommendations that I made. Because I think having gone through it before, we spent a lot of time recognizing a lot of the things that we do or always trying to improve, and what I'm happy with is typically the things that we have self-identified is recommendations, but the things that we need to work on are usually confirmed by the visiting committee. So I felt good about that, so they, they had a lot of commendations, but they have some recommendations as well. And I feel really good that there are things that we've been working on, that we want to continue working on and they kind of agree with that and support that. Nothing really comes as a surprise to us, it's the second time that that's been done, so. A lot of good things, but we also, we also recognize, we met today on, here are some things that we need to continue to work on. You know, we're really gonna work on, you know, the vision of graduates, what, what do we expect here? Being able to articulate that and be able to report out on that, so, you know, we've got, we've got the report this summer, so we were meeting today, you know, on the next set, so we're gonna take, so I was excited about that.
Yeah, it's a really long list, so if anybody wants my copy after the meeting, I'll give it to you or we can make it available. Posted, it's pretty, it's, it's, it's a pretty neat insight to have recognition. And again, to reaffirm what Mr. Holden said, this isn't just in New Hampshire and some of the recognition that our district gets with the high rankings. This is within New England and they get that kind of call-out and such a long list. This is within New England, and they get that kind of call-out and such a long list of specific things. Two of the, three first ones are on curriculum, very important to them, so it's congratulations to, uh, the whole staff and administration for, for some very quiet recognition for great accomplishment. Wonderful to see. Uh, next up on information items, staring at you, big fella. CIP update.
Way to start, long summer. We just, so, first of all, I'd really like to thank, you know, the staff and, and Russ and all the teachers and administrators for working with Banwell, and I hope it was, I hope, I hope you enjoyed it because seeing what came out of it with the educational program summary was just, to me, I was very happy with the results and how it came out. And I was so happy to see how the staff, when we looked through all the wants and needs, how there wasn't, um, there didn't end up being a bathroom in every classroom, and things like that. You know, I mean, just really realistic educational needs that came out of it. And that's, that's just kudos to everybody that was involved there. But that's like the beginning part of it. Like, I'm gonna fast forward to tonight where we actually got, um, the Fields Committee started, and that was, um, we ended up having the AD there, the coaches, the rec director from the town, the town road agent, Scott Hesleton, and all working together and trying to come up with a solution for our fields. And they actually took charge, and they are going to bring us back some ideas for our next CIP meeting, which is on the twenty-fifth of September. And Banwell is gonna have, help them actually with a whole bunch of overlays of land that may be available that the town owns, and come up with some realistic ideas that we can bring forward. And that's kind of a nut, nutshell of what's going on, but, um, really, really happy with how the results came out.
Yeah, I'd second that, it's a great update. They're on point, a lot of work over the summer by the staff and Russ and, um, everybody involved. Principals did some heavy lifting, um, heritage and heavy lifting, so a really positive outcome. Feedback from Brad informally was that it's not always as successful a process to get to consensus where you were absolutely clear, when one column has needs and one column has wants, and teasing those out and making them clear. So, we, it was a relief for us on the committee to see the, the investment, and also a very prudent approach through the whole thing, is it was really, for me personally, as a taxpayer, a relief to see that constant prudent approach to that with the, the student population that we have. Um, with the Fields Committee kicking off tonight with, I think, the right people on it, anybody in the community has any creative ideas around privately-owned land, different ways of looking at it, please send those ideas in. Any questions around the project, they come through Russ, so you can email them. What we, we need to have in these projects, like they do in lots of other towns and similar projects beyond school projects, is you have to catch, to be responsible to your voters, you have to catch all the questions and start to see patterns of frequently asked questions. And so, if we're all answering them differently, we might be missing a really important theme for the community or concern or a great idea. And so, like you do in these pri- municipal projects, we need to funnel those through. So, Russ's email, any questions you have, whether it's one or a long list, send them to Russ so he can share them out appropriately, and if it's, it's looking like it's being asked by several people, we can add it to a frequently asked questions document, which we reviewed in the meeting prior to this, and it'll be up on the site tomorrow. So, we're gonna be as transparent and then action-oriented as we can, that's an important process. So, if you have ideas and suggestions, send them into Russ, we can disseminate. But if you also have some ideas, is there, is there some privately-owned land that could potentially have six acres of new athletic field acres? Please let us know, we're open to whatever the best, responsible way to solve some of our space constraints with our successful school system. You guys are the experts, let us know.
We also accept donations of land.
Those are encouraged.
I think it's great that you brought in all the different, um, entities within the town, too, because this is, it's, it's a bigger problem than just the school. I mean, it really brings the community into it, and there's a, there's a huge interdependency and among the community. This is really a community challenge.
Really don't realize, I don't, if you're not involved in it every day, how hard it is to schedule these fields with all the kids that use them, and especially when the fields are unusable. Uh, just like our, um, great example is our, is our track team. Our track team practices in the parking lot, you know? They've never been on field, you know? They, they practice indoors and in the parking lot, and, and we have fifty kids on that track team, you know? And it's, it's impressive for a small school that we are so active and that we have all these great things to offer them, but it's, it's time to really take a look at what we really need, you know?
Yep, unusually high, consistently high population of students. And Scott, the rec director, was saying it's the same thing with him. He's got a hundred Sunapee kids, not the other kids that can come in that are welcome, but Sunapee kids. And so, um, yes, it's, our normal is an unusually, unusually highly engaged, active population and really struggling to figure out. It's been a long-term struggle, people have been, kinda worked with it, but it's exciting to really explore, how can we responsibly help affirm what's a key part of our identity where the kids are involved in sports or other activities, B, club is taking off, STEAM is taking off. It's like, I think Sean was totally joking when he said, "They're all involved with five or six things." It makes an interesting town sometimes, even in a smaller district, to accommodate all of that. So, um, feels good on the CIP to see us taking a district-wide view and having some folks lean in to come up with fresh ideas and make a recommendation to us.
Yep.
Let's keep this train rolling. Uh, summer project update, please.
Sure. Um, DUC work has been completed here. We're waiting for HVAC units to be delivered, or told somewhere about the September first. Um, we will work with the logistics of potentially having kids in the building and which part of the buildings we're shutting off, and how we're going in and out of this building to make all that work. Uh, Matt and the crew have done a great job with the cleaning and the painting. Uh, the insulation has been completed at the elementary school. Those are really our, our big projects this summer, and then just on top of just the everyday, day-to-day, build a wall here, take down a wall there, move this classroom over there, move that classroom over there.
Yeah.
So, that has all been done, and we are ready to open come Monday morning. I said Monday morning, not tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yes, so just, uh, 'cause some, a parent asked, "How's, how's it gonna work to do, have a crane here when the, the kids are here?" Can you, are you gonna email the parents, or are you gonna?
Right, so we have to get, we have to get the exact date, um, and, you know, it would be great if we get it towards the end of next week, maybe that Friday or Monday, when there's a holiday and a Saturday. If that doesn't happen, we're just gonna go look at logistics, so the front, we'll just let people know, hey, it's coming this date, and the front of the building will be closed off. And we can go on our wings, but we'll probably evacuate the middle of the building. And if you need to go from one wing to the other, you'll go out the back and go around. And so, we'll just have to think about logistically how we're gonna make it all work, um, and we'll communicate that to parents the best we can, and we'll ensure that our students are doing and going where they need to go and not being near cranes.
Yeah, and they just asked, and I just wanted to publicly make sure we touched on it. So, if people aren't familiar with the project, it's, it's been discussed for, I think, like, ten years or something. They're finally fixing the HVAC, so it's a big unit that has to be craned on to, two of them have to be craned on to the, to the building. So, that'll get communicated, that's great. Um, new staff hires, please.
Real quick, over the summer, we have a new paraprofessional at the Mill High School, Robert Zepplin. We have two paraprofessionals at the, at the elementary school, Per Inglis and Tara Lakeman. Uh, and district-wide, we picked up a new bus driver, which is great, 'cause the rest of the world can't find him, and somehow we did. Andrew Gosnell and a new custodian, Kyle, and I won't try to pronounce Kyle's name, but it's got a lot of consonants.
Oh, it's in, yeah, if anybody sees Andrew, give him a high five. Hiring a bus, uh, mentioned at a school board meeting about hiring a certified bus driver is, uh, not a common occurrence, and we're very lucky to have Andrew join the Sunapee team. Um, Sunapee Historic Building and Place.
See, this is an interesting recognition, it just came to my, to my desk the other day. Um, so apparently our SAU office is a historical place in Sunapee.